Yeah. Max is very Marine Associate.
Yeah.
Very, very. He went eight years as a girl. That's what I'd like to tell me. Big day for our athlete. Seems pretty common. I talked to him earlier.
Apply to the village. Thank you. Hope you can hear good. It's even better. So with that, we've spent a few, a few years evaluating this. Lori Deacon, to my right, who is the chairman of our broadband committee and a council member, has been wonderful in leading the charge the last two years after Ann put it in shape for us. And I'm going to turn this over shortly to Lori. She'll introduce our distinguished guests from Chagrin Valley Gig. And we hope today, either through your presence here and through the YouTube channel, to answer questions that you have with regard to bringing fiber optic to the village. Thank you for coming. Lori?
Thanks, Steve. So I wanted to start just by introducing Ohio Gig, Chagrin Valley Gig. You'll see is, is the entity that would be providing us service. Then I'm going to go through some slides that I did that'll show you kind of the process that we went through to get to the selection of Ohio Gig. And then Ohio Gig is, is going to present some slides to you to answer questions, talk about the product and, and so on and so forth. So we're really pleased to have Tim Barrowsman here, who's a board advisor, CEO of Ohio Gig. Tim has extensive experience in the industry. I think you were CEO of ComNet. A lot of passion for, for developing business in this area and really worked with Drew and others in the Hunter family to develop the Ohio Gig business. And then Drew Hunter, Drew, I think you started out in the entertainment industry.
I did, yeah.
Where we learned that you were aware of the movement from a consolidated place to go for all your entertainment to it being in all sorts of different places. That's the way the industry's going. And that was part of, of your learning. You've developed several businesses as well as what I thought was really interesting is your work led to the development and patent of a composite cable that can be pushed or pulled horizontally in walls or vertically between floors. That sounds amazing. And then, Tim, do you want to introduce anyone else for your team before I?
I usually get by without these. We can talk loud and often, so. But also with our team is Don Fellows. Don is the construction manager with Chagrin Valley Gig. Don's been, been with us now for how long, Don?
About nine months.
Nine months. And Don is, is leading the charge on our construction, which, for the Chagrin Valley Gig, which started down in Hunting Valley. Hunting Valley was our, our first adopter as a community. So we started down there. We also have built a route down in Angola, not Angola.
Aurora.
Aurora. I'm in Indiana, so I'm a Western Ohio guy. So over in Aurora, the service of multi-dwelling unit, an apartment complex. It's a developer. We have a relationship out of, out of Columbus, and he's developing the old Jagga Park area. So we're working on that, and Don's built fiber down there as well. We also have Fabian, and Fabian, I'm going to mess up the last name, so Batista? All right. So Fabian is Don's right-hand man on the construction team. So you'll see him out and about as we start construction in the Gates Mills area. Fabian makes sure that our guys are treating your property like it's our property. So whenever we do go through the property, whether that be in the road right away or putting the drop on, we make sure we restore it to the same condition as it was before we arrived. Same condition or better is what we normally tell people. So that's our objective. And also with us is Max Waters. Max is with Fiber Capital Partners. Fiber Capital Partners is, is ran by Nick Hunter, Drew's brother, and they are the funding side. Nick actually operates several funds and that present investment opportunities for, I'll say, qualified investors within the community or people that can, can afford to make that type of investment in, at a business expansion like we're doing. I never say startup because we've been doing this. I've been doing it all my life. I grew up on a small independent telephone company in Northwest Ohio. And we've been operational in Ohio with management team that has run manufacturing businesses, insurance business, a wealth of experience well over 40 years. So we've been doing that, and my family has actually been involved with that telephone company. It's over 100-year phone company, and I know my great-great-grandfather was involved in it. So we've been involved in the, in this industry for a long time with a lot of experience, so.
I don't talk that loud, so I'm told by my husband who doesn't hear much. Okay, great. Thanks, Mike. Next slide. So just progress to date. The mayor filled you in a little bit. Started out in Whitney, Larry Frankel, who's here, and others, Michael Press. A committee was formed to look at this issue. There was a survey done. Many of you might remember getting that during, I think it was during COVID, right, Larry, that that went out? That, that committee researched, studied the feasibility, studied the options. And then after review, determined that we, this was a fairly complex matter and that we needed a consultant. So we engaged a consultant who had a lot of expertise in this area in order to make sure that we were really understanding the complexity in the subject. So we went to RFP for the consultant. We engaged Reed Consulting, who did conclude that fiber to the home is economically and practically feasible for Gates Mills. So that's really what we were looking for initially from the consultant. But they did caution that our lower home density and topography would be challenging for providers and that we might have to make an investment, like a lot of communities in Ohio have done in order to bring in fiber. So the mayor appointed a Gates Mills committee to undertake an RFP for broadband fiber to the home providers. We got three respondents, Ohio Gig, AT&amp;T. Spectrum submitted a letter that was not responsive. Next slide, Mike. So we looked at the pros and cons between the two companies that, that made it to the finals. Similar electronic architecture and services. On the pro side, AT&amp;T, as you know, it's a large established provider, financial strength, and they have infrastructure already in place. On the pro side for Ohio Gig, 90% underground build. That's something that, if you're familiar with the comprehensive plan, is very important to us here in, in Gates Mills. We love our tree canopy, and we don't like it when it hits the electric lines. Locally owned and operated, guaranteed rates, no charge for the drop to the home for an initial period, and significantly less outlay for Gates Mills. Essentially, we're making a prepayment for services. And also the fact that they're already implementing in Hunting Valley, and we've been in touch with Hunting Valley and, or, you know, along the way, following that, and it's going well over there, as we understand it, Tim, from Hunting Valley. So the cons, AT&amp;T would be an aerial build. They wanted a $3 million contribution from Gates Mills. The ROI was not there for them on this project due to our smaller size. Market rates. The cons for Ohio Gig, you know, they're relatively new, smaller provider, less financial strength than AT&amp;T. And at some point, you know, the company might, might be sold or bought by a larger entity. So the recommendation of our consulting firm was that we select Ohio Gig. It was also the recommendation of our committee. And we were approved at council to move forward to negotiating a definitive agreement with Ohio Gig. We hired Greg Dunn and some of his associates from the Taft firm, who also worked on the Hunting Valley agreement and who's very experienced in the area. And of course, our own counsel, Todd Hunt, from Russell and Andrus. So what are the benefits that we see that Ohio Gig brings to Gates Mills? It's a high-resilience underground build as opposed to legacy cable. It's going to be aerial, except it, it will be aerial only where there's obstructions. They will deploy to the entire community. So our concern is that other providers, such as AT&amp;T, would, would pick off the easy-to-access homes. And then we'd have residents who didn't have access without paying for it. It's a 30-month project period. We've negotiated community-sponsored discounted pricing. There will be connectivity to Gates Mills community sites. There are 11 sites through a 25-year prepaid service. It's a guaranteed with no price increase. There's an 84-month rate lock guarantee for residents and businesses committing during the project period. No charge for service drop installation to the home as long as you sign up within the first 15 months. If it, that could be extendable for the entire project period based on a community service drop average of less than 450 feet. Significantly improved speeds from, from cable. If you know anything about download and upload speed, that their speeds are significant. So it's optional. It's optional if you want to sign up, if you want to stay with your current provider, Spectrum or AT&amp;T, that's fine. Ohio Gig has accepted the subscription risk. And there's no guarantee from the village that, of what the uptake rate will be. Although I understand in Hunting Valley, it's 80% at this point, Tim.
Communities, communities really come together to support the project. I mean, the community, community did a similar arrangement where it's prepaid service. So the community put their foot in, and the residents appreciate what the community did. They, we've attended picnics, we've attended various events to help get the word out, and the community's been very supportive. Because when you do, when you do this in a small area, to be honest, it, it takes a community effort. You know, the community has to come together to support a project, to bring and improve infrastructure when the density's not there.
Okay, thanks, Mike. So we started with a term sheet. So now we're kind of getting to the, a little bit of the legal nitty-gritties. We started with a term sheet that was based on their agreement with Hunting Valley. We conducted due diligence, and we negotiated some terms unique to Gates Mills, including pricing and to manage what we saw as some of the risks. Key terms, it's a 25-year agreement. All households and businesses are covered. The entity that will be providing services to us is Chagrin Valley Gig, which is a subsidiary of Ohio Gig. And Chagrin Valley Gig is the entity that's providing service to Hunting Valley, potentially Chagrin Falls, Kirtland, Kirtland Hills, right?
It's also the, down in, in the, in the Aurora area.
In Aurora, okay. So Chagrin Valley Gig is going to design, construct, and build high-quality architecture standard at its own cost. We can approve initial planning, final engineering design. They're going to develop critical path methods scheduled. They'll meet monthly with us to report progress or delays. That way, we can stay informed. They're going to use their best efforts to build underground. And if they can't, they'll consult with us, and we'll figure it out. And they'll also take precautions, I think, Tim, you already mentioned this, to protect property and persons and restore the condition to what was there prior. Completion targeted for 30 months. So again, their services, high-speed broadband administrative services. They have a centralized network operations center located in Ohio, staffed by Ohio residents. So it's our responsibility. We're going to prepay for services to 11 Gates Mills building for a 25-year term. It's a total price of $455,000. Once service is commenced to those buildings, we can upgrade. The rate's guaranteed. There's credits for service interruption. We also have a right of first reviews, or, 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 Ohio Gig, or CV Gig has a right of first refusal on a storage building that we have if they need to lease or they want to own those premises to use for technical services, equipment, what have you. And so that, along with a few other items, we're providing in-kind services to Chagrin Valley Gig in order to facilitate their construction and to reduce their construction cost, which translates into reduced rates for us.
One of the biggest ones was, you know, the right to attach the pedestrian bridge and to help us with other bridge crossings across the river. That, that was a huge benefit, and, and we appreciate that. We've, we've done that with some other communities, our founding community in Morrow, attached to an old railroad bridge. And that breaks it, makes it much quicker and much simpler because those are the areas when you run into rock, when you have to cross these riverbeds, especially when they're rock beds.
And they're going to work with our city engineer, who's here, Chris Wright, on crossing the bridge, on working with the state to cross the other bridge, the county, working with the water department, providing, we're going to provide, we're going to allow you to put your equipment in certain areas, store it there also. And then, these are the rates that Chagrin Valley Gig is going to be providing us based on the level of, of speed that you're interested in having, depending on your, your, your home, your needs, what you're doing work-wise, et cetera. We also have a most favored nations clause, which means that they will give best pricing to everyone in the village based on what, what they're offering to other villages other than the, those who sign up early and get the promotional rate. Okay, this is from our, our meeting last evening where Tim and Nick Hunter were here. Any, any questions? I know I covered a lot of material. I think I also have, Mike, didn't I also have a list of our committee? Who, because I want, yeah, okay, there we go. I just want to give credit to the committee, Chris Courtney, Rick Heimer, who's here. Thank you, Rick. Dennis Lezat, Michael Press, who couldn't be here, Steve. Larry Frankel did a lot of the initial work, so I just wanted to thank them. It was a great committee.
I'll just add one thing, Lori, since Freeman. You know, one, one of the things, if you, if you go to the Chagrin Valley Gig website, and if you look at the, the residential rates that are displayed on that screen, those are the undiscounted rates. Before we worked with Lori and the team to negotiate the agreement, the rates that you see on the screen are the discounted rates. So you'll see that savings. And the way you get those rates is when you register with us, you register your home. And we look at your home map as to whether or not it's in the village of Gates Mills or what village it is in, and do we have what I call a community sponsor, what we call a community-sponsored discount for that village. And then we know which price, which rate you're eligible for. So when you get your service agreement with us or your order for service, you place your order for service order with us, that agreement will reflect the discounted rate for the village of Gates Mills. Just wanted to point out that if people go to the website, they're going to see a different number than that's in that table because that is the undiscounted rate. But you can see the savings that the village negotiated for you.
Yes. Yep. Yes. Yeah, so, so what we, what we always ask when you, I'm, I'm going to stand up.
Yeah, it's easier for me. Yeah, I can take that, you're ready to relinquish it.
Easier for both.
Okay. So what, what we do when, when you're selling your home, we ask that you, you contact us, and then we allow that agree, your service order to be assumed by the new resident, just like when you assume the existing electric utilities. And what we ask is we provide paperwork that you can include with, to your realtor with the closing your home that allows for that uninterrupted transfer of that internet service. Yep, yep. They, they just, they are assuming your, your, your service order. And that service order has that specified seven-year term, so they're assuming that. They can, of course, if they want more speed, they can upgrade to the new service, which will upgrade to the discounted rates. Yep, you're welcome. Anybody else have a question? Yes. Yep, we, we, yeah, we, we complete, we, we serve as we progress. If you, a lot of the larger companies, they wait until they build it out, and then they switch, switch from construction to operational. Since we're, we, we do our own construction, our guys in the field are the sale, are our initial salespeople because they're the ones working in your yard. So as we build out and as we complete a road and get it spliced in, we immediately start serving that road. We, we, you know, is, and we sell road by road. So as we're building out, it'll be road and address range. We will convert that from in-construction to serviceable. And as soon as it converts to serviceable, you can be connected and be served. Yes? No, no, that, the 25-year agreement was the agreement with the village. So what we, what we, yep. So what we, what we, yep. So we did a rate lock guarantee. We call rate lock guarantee, it's one of our biggest selling points against legacy cable and telephone companies where you see what I call the, the ever, ever-increasing bill when you turn your back. So we don't, we do not do that. That's one of the benefits we bring. We lock that rate in. The only thing we can do during that seven-year period, and it's seven years, is we can, we can give you more bandwidth for the dollar, but we can't give you less. So we may, and typically what happens is about every three years, the industry gives higher speeds for the same dollar. We can have, we can give you more, we can't charge you more. Yes. We actually have that listed, and I used to know that off the top of my head. I'm not going to repeat numbers because I've been running numbers. I think if, so if we go back to those rates.
Yeah, there you go.
Yep. So this, the, the undiscounted rate here is $199.95. I'm not going to do math in my head, I'll let you do that. $154.95 here, $114.95 here, and $84.95 here. Those, those are, so you can see there's a substantial discount based upon the village prepaying for those services and making other in-kind commitments. That is the dis, this is the discounted rates. The rates that, if you go to our website, the Chagrin Valley Gig website, because that's covering a much broader area, the, that will not show these rates. So these, these rates are post-discount. That's what you'd get when you see your, your service order with us. It'll reflect these rates. And these rates will be on file with the village so that if there's ever a question, these rates were documented and you have a reference point. And we're, we're, you know, we're going to be true to our word. We register these by village, and we track every address and every site based on where it falls. When does the seven years start? The seven years starts from your service activation.
Go to, go to the back here from this side first.
There, there is no, there's a forbearance order against charging tax on internet right now. The current administration could do away with that. But right now, you can, I cannot charge sales tax on internet to businesses and residential. So we do not charge that tax. There's also something known as what's called the universal service charge, which in essence is a tax by the FCC. They cannot apply that. We cannot pass that through to residential users either. So you should see no taxes on our bills because internet is non-taxable based on that forbearance order. The only service you, that you would pay extra for are services that you get, that you request. So if you have a large home, I always say, when we put a service in, we put what's called a managed router in with the service. That'll cover roughly 2,400 square feet.
For, for Wi-Fi service.
For Wi-Fi services. If you have a larger home than that, we have what we call a mesh, a mesh unit that you can put in, that'll network to that, it'll extend it. We provide those typically run, if you compare it on the marketplace, when bought, you're paying about $150. We charge $75, and then we manage that, which means our guys can see it. If there's an issue with it, we can contact you proactively if that unit's failing or not operating correctly. And that, a $5, $5 monthly fee if you add one of those mesh extenders. So if you, and then another thing is if you say you have an outbuilding, a steel shed, and you want to have service in your outbuilding, that would be what I call an extended drop. We charge one time for those extended drops. But if anything that we're charging for you is going to be, be estimated to you at the time of request. Yes, here. Yes. Okay. 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 Yeah, yeah, so, so when we're, when we're working in the, in the road right away, and we're working on somebody's property, I mean, this is goodwill. We, we fix those incidents. I'm going to let, let Drew talk about the operation down in Little Miami Gig. You know, a lot of those, those agreements are adopted from typical legal subscription agreements. But we, we treat the customers right, because that's, we may, it may say one thing there, but we, we'd be guilty in the pub, in court of public perception, right? If we didn't repair what we damaged. So you want to give some examples of things that we've repaired?
Yeah, I mean, you know, when you're digging underground, you can't see everything, right? There's the, there's the everyday dog fences, drainage pipes, septic systems, those types of things. We will do our best to repair those with you as our own crews. If it requires something more than that, we've replaced driveways, right? So, you know, we're here to do right by the community. That's why we have Chagrin Valley Gig and all these different companies as community companies, because the people that we hire and that are working for us are people that are from the community and the surrounding areas that you may go to church with, or have kids at school with, and that kind of stuff. So our ethos is to treat our, treat your property like it's our, how we want our property treated, and to do right by the community.
The, and then, I, I'll continue, I'll continue. It's kind of in a good, it's a kind of in a good faith basis. I mean, it's like, I guess we'll have to look at the agreement, talk to the attorney on that. But so noted, we'll take, we'll take a look at that. It's, I think that's more meant for in-home, once, you know, so it's, there's some, I'm not sure why it reads that way. We'll have to take a look at it and go back and look at that.
Correct.
That's right, yeah. The, the other thing is, is in, in the reason the thing says about the price increase, if you read the rate lock guarantee, the rate lock guarantee is very specific. For that term, it cannot increase. We also have people that sign up and make no commitment inside of certain areas. There's no village commitment, and there's no commitment that customers willing to sign. They just want to go month to month. If it's month to month, we have the right to increase those rates. If there's a rate lock guarantee in place, that's, that is what locks it in to where we can't make those changes. And that's what we've put in place with the village. And then, and then there was one other item that you mentioned there that I want to make sure we came back and addressed. What was it?
Oh, reliability.
Oh, reliability?
Yeah.
So reli, reliability, there's what's called, in, in the document, there's what's called a chronic outage. And a chronic outage occurs in one of, one of three things. If it's out for an extended period of time, in a, in a monthly period, which I think is 20, 24 contiguous or 17, 72 cumulative through multiple outages in a month, and that we don't repair it on a timely basis. So it's either an outage, or we don't, it's impaired, and we don't repair it. And if that chronic outage occurs, there's no commitment on your part. You can switch back to any provider you'd like to. We're not, there is no, there's no reason for you to stay with us if we're not performing. Our whole thing is, we operate in performance. We're going to hire local, we're going to operate local. We have to provide that high level of quality of service, or we won't get the take rates we need to be able to sustain this business. So it, we are highly motivated to make sure that ser, that service is there. And it's the chronic outage is the piece that protects you. So even if you do sign an agreement that says we're in a, we're in a three-year, or a five-year, or a seven-year commitment, if the service isn't there, you got the right to leave at any time.
There's no commitment on your end.
Yeah.
We're committing a seven-year price lock guarantee.
Yep.
You can cancel anytime. You're, you're correct. Yep. So, you know, part, so we do a lot of proactive, you talked about a managed router and that kind of stuff. We do a lot of proactive monitoring on our network to make sure that you are up and working. But it does take a call from the resident sometimes to understand when things aren't working at an optimal level, and you feel like your services are degraded. So there is some responsibility for you to call us and say, hey, my service isn't working, get somebody out here, and we'll get on that right away. With a hundred percent, or a 90, you know, a, a goal of 100% underground, the, the instances of damage are greatly reduced. However, if somebody goes and takes tobacco and doesn't call 811, they can cause a lot of damage that does take time to repair. So I think it leaves it on a case-by-case basis, saying that we're not proactively crediting bills upon outages. But just like any service provider, you let us know that you've got a problem, and we'll do our best to make it right.
And, and I'll show this here in a minute. The, the core ring that's going to feed this network is what the city's, village is anchoring. That agreement has commitments in it. Has commitments in terms of the meantime to repair and the performance. And that's what feeds each individual home around the village. So that core piece is locked in with the village, that we have to keep that up, up and running and operational. The thing with the, every individual resident, I mean, there's, I think there's 1,010 homes is what the total population is here. That's not, that's not going to sustain this business. We have to get, we have to get the 35 to 3,600 homes in aggregate here. So every customer we hook up, it's critical that we keep those customers with us for seven to 10 years to hit our payback. So if we are not making sure that each individual residence is satisfied, and one of the things we do, I don't know if you see it with the electric, we, we actually send out text messages to our residents when we have an outage. We acknowledge we have an outage, and we provide updates as we repair it. So you have the option to opt out of that. So our whole, our whole commitment to make sure you're satisfied is, one, is the commitment to the village with those service level agreements. But second, to the, to the residents, we got to make sure you're satisfied, because we need you. We need your commitment to our company and our service for seven to 10 years, or we got a financial issue.
And, and I would also add that there's, that, that specific clause has, that's part of the SLA agreement, service level agreement. When you want dedicated, like, guarantees of, if it's out for more than eight hours, I get a refund on my bill, those are business class services.
Yep, they're available.
All those things are available. A typical resident would not want to pay the
Premium.
Premium to have that level of SLA agreement in place.
Those services typically
Certainly exist, and that's what Tim was saying. The ca, the city has that level of agreement with us that says, hey, if you're out more than eight hours, there's some sort of remediation that needs to happen here.
Those services typically start around $300 a month versus what I'm showing.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
I'm the village engineer, Chris Courtney. One of our roles in the project is going to be to review the plans and work with Chagrin Valley Gig to make sure that they're locating their fiber in the right location. The kinds of things I'm going to be concerned with as they put their plans together is making sure they're showing all the existing utilities on the plans, so we have them placed in a location that's not going to be in direct conflict with something else. We don't want them in close proximity to a water main that might break. We don't want them in close proximity to a gas line that might have to be repaired, or a storm sewer that might need to be repaired. So we'll try to tuck them into as safe a location as possible, so that if there are any other complications that occur with nearby utilities, it's not going to impact that line. I think you just had an issue in Hunting Valley, where you're on the same side of the road as the water main. And even though the water department got a little wandery with their excavation, they broke your line that had newly been installed as they were repairing the water line. We'll try to avoid that as much as possible with a mandate that you got to be on the opposite side of the street from the water line. We don't want them directly on top of anything else. Also, with respect to connections to individual homes, and I would suggest this with any contractor, not just these guys. If there's going to be anybody that's doing work on your home, they're going to be installing a line, you as the resident should walk that route with the contractor that's going to be putting it in. You should be pointing out to them anything that you're specifically concerned about. You should be taking photographs of it and looking at those with the contractor, making sure you're in agreement before you let them on your property. And you should have their form and initialing any specific concerns that you have. And that should all be documented before they step foot on your property to start digging, so that in the event that they do damage anything, you've got proof that you talked with them about it in advance, that they did in fact damage it, and you can back that up with that sort of information. That's also for their protection. Because the last thing they want to have is, they do a great job on somebody's property, and suddenly they take a look at something that they didn't see before that they think was created by Chagrin Valley Gig that was not. And that's where you really run into loggerheads between residents and the contractor. So do yourself a favor, do them a favor, and they should be insisting on it as well to have kind of that pre-construction meeting with them before they come onto your property.
Yeah, part of, part of the process is a site survey, and I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to just add one thing to that. Then I, lady in the back, I skipped a couple of times around here, so I'm going to go to her next on the questions. And I think our presentation is going to answer a lot of this. So hopefully, at some point, I'd like to stop on the questions and go to the presentation, and then see if we can address some of those with some of the slides. But the thing I want to point out is, we are a member of the Ohio Utility Protection Services. Anytime that we go into your home, and in the agreement is what's called a right-of-entry. Whenever we leave that public right of way, and we go into private, we add, we request a right-of-entry. And that right-of-entry will be laid out. We'll do a home survey with you and a site survey. So that's walking the outside of the property, as well as the inside of property where we put services in. And then we will call 811 DIG, and then we come out for them to locate all utilities on your property. Now, that does not include things, if you have a water line going out to an outbuilding, you have an electrical line going out to an outbuilding. Those are items that you may have done independent, that would not be located by the electric utilities. Those are reasons that we want to do the walkout with you, to identify as much of that as possible. Dog fences, sprinkler systems, all of those things we want to identify with you to avoid creating a hassle for you. So I'll go to the back here, lady to back. Yep.
You mentioned you're underground.
Yep.
Unless there's obstruction.
Yep.
What have you seen so far in Gates Mills? There's going to be obstruction, and you're going to go above ground.
We haven't done, we haven't, we haven't had anything we've, we haven't been able to get through yet.
Second question.
Across the river on the railroad bridge.
In here.
In Ga, on Gates Mills.
Yeah, they said Hunting Valley.
Oh.
We haven't encountered anything in Hunting Valley yet.
Have we done?
No. Yeah, so we haven't, we haven't gone underground yet.
Yeah, we're 100%.
Or we're going overhead yet, sorry.
I'm just asking for Gates Mills, other than the walking bridge, which you've already gotten access.
Yeah.
Using, what is there that will be above ground?
So, so
Second question.
Okay.
Let me, so I don't forget. Second question, you said you'll turn on your, we'll start paying as soon as it starts. Where are you going to start in Gates Mills, and what's your ending point? Third question, if you're more than 425 feet from the road, how much extra is that going to cost you?
Okay, so, first question I started to answer, right? So what was, what was the first question again?
Obstruction, going overhead.
So whenever, whenever we go underground, we got to maintain a certain depth. We hit, sometimes in around this area, what I call the impenetrable layer. You look at geology, it's very, it's very shallow in spots as you get closer to the river. We have equipment to get through that rock, and we use our best effort to get through it. But if we can't get through it, I nearly tried twice. Third time, I'm going overhead, or I'm at least changing my equipment. So those are the things that, that stop us from going underground, is that impenetrable layer of rock. We've hit granite in areas, and that's very difficult to get through. So that, those are the only things that I see, and the riverbed is the one that concerns me. That's why we ask for the in-kind support on the, on the river crossings. What was the second question?
Tim, Tim, real quickly, just Laurie, to your question. So there's two bridges, there'll be the residential, sorry, the pedestrian bridge, and then we'll also need to cross the northern bridge by Wilson Mills in Brigham. And those have already been identified, and, and we'll help facilitate that.
And Laurie, the other thing I would add is, when CBGIG does run into obstructions, they're, we're going to meet with them, they're going to explain it, we're going to work, you know, work through it. So, you know, we'll know what those are, and we'll work together to agree, you know. Say again, Laurie?
Our, our, our whole goal would be to 100% underground. When we have assets above ground, it's a risk to us with all the tree cover and stuff in anywhere in Ohio, right? So that, we've got to pay the power company to be on the poles. It's different construction than we normally do. It's a hassle for us to go above ground. It's our last resort. We only use it as a last resort if there's no way to do it feasibly underground. Yep. Yeah, that's great. Yeah, starting in.
So, so where, where are we going to start? We're already active in Hunting Valley. Where are we coming up the south? We've already built, what's, what's, is Cedar? So Cedar, we've already built Cedar, which is half Hunting Valley. Opposite side of the road is Gates Mills. So that's probably be the first people that receive service, because they're going to be, already be listed as serviceable as soon as that route is fully complete. And then our, then we have to get service into the village, right? We have to be able to connect you to the world. That doesn't happen except in major metro areas. But we got to get you tied into that, into that area. We're from Hunting Valley, we go to a place called a Blue Bridge Data Center, which goes down to Columbus. There'll eventually be a, as we get subscriptions build up down there, normally around 150, we'll add a second egress point, so that it's fully survivable. So if something happens on that route to Columbus, which is fully protected, but still we could fail at that single building, if that got hit by a tornado or another disaster. So we always like to have a second diverse location. So we will build up into the village. We will complete this ring around the village. And what you see is, the orange is what I'm building. The aqua, or light blue, is fiber that exists from another provider that built strictly to serve cell towers. They built through Hunting Valley, or through Gates Mills, but they did not build to serve residents. They were building to get to a cell tower, one to get the big dollars. They were what I call redlining. So they built this route, we're going to secure facilities on that route to get us going early, and to get us through a difficult area. And then we're going to come in, and underneath there is, is that orange line continues. We plan to overbuild that and replace it. So we're using the aqua to get started early to build that ring. And this is where all of the city buildings are at. So this will be the priority, is to build this. We will use that aqua to get a diverse path out, so that we have diversity from that connection in Hunting Valley. We also are looking at a route to the north. We're working with, with the Village of, or the City of Kirtland, as well as with Gate Mills. So as we work with the City of Kirtland, that route may go, may continue first to be an egress point. And then also, you'll see this route going to the west. That same provider has facilities along 91, or Sam Center Boulevard. We will tie into it on that side, so that we have what I call tertiary protection. Three ways out of town, so that if one of those goes down, you got two backups. That's one of the ways we make sure you're not without service, is we don't go single-threaded when we come into these small communities. So that's, that's where, this is where we're building first. And this satisfies the commitment to the sit that we've negotiated with the village. And the last question?
The cost of, of drops over 450 feet.
Cost of drops over 450 feet. So what we've agreed is that as long as the average stays under 450 feet, we're going to extend that throughout the project period. We're going to stop, and we're going to look at it at month 15. That's the reason Laurie said, Laurie's slide said, if you, if you sign up before month 15, there will be no charge.
Even if you're over 450.
Even if you're over 450 feet. As long as the average, as long as it's a community effort, and I always said, this is a community effort. We like helping people that help themselves, so we like the group effort. So if that average stays under 450, there's no charge. If it goes over 450, we have the right to charge $1.50 per foot. Chances are, I'm going to take a look at it, see where the commitments are. Can we get some people to pre-register, and then look, re-precalculate those drops to say, are we going to be able to pull that drop distance back under 450? We're not just going to look at, say, oh, it's over 450, we got to start charging. We're going to look at it to say, what's the backlog look like? We're going to look at it to say, what's the backlog look like? Yep. Yes.
Question, what's the percentage of people in Hunting Valley that do not take your service? And how are you going to get these people to take? What type of promotion are you going to have?
There won't be, this is our offering. That's one of the things that we found is most people in tight-knit, smaller communities don't like promotions. And there's no planned promotions. You've got the promotion, it's right here. I don't go in and I don't do bundling, I don't do promotions after that. It's a group effort. I'm going to be very transparent, very upfront as to what I need from you. And I need your commitment and I need to get the percentages. We ran this model, we ran it based upon hitting 45%, 60%, or 40%, 60%, 80%. We are seeing down in Hunting Valley 80%. I'm transitioning to an independent advisor to the company. My advice is to proceed at 60, is based on the 60%. Got a safety valve, nowhere at 40%. They get charged dropping to 40%, I call it the slow roll approach. I'm going to say, slow down. Let's make sure we're building only the highest density areas in Gates Mills first to get the take rate up before we start expending in the lower density areas. Or let's make sure we're being very strategic in this deployment to make sure the cash flow keeps up with the investment. So that is one of the things, we have a project period of 30 months, but we have the right to extend it if we see some of these things going off the original targets.
Physical installations here, you mentioned backhoes and stuff. Are you going to have a line of backhoes digging up the property? When we put a gas line in, they had just a small drill, I was pretty impressed.
Yep.
It would drill right through.
That's what we use. We use, yeah, we use directional drills. That's what you're going to see, the primary thing. And then we use hydro vacs rather than backhoes. So it basically follows the permitting. So permitting ranges typically is, and these do go up and down because you encounter rock, right? But so it's a nominal depth. It's typically around 32 to 36 inches is what most permitting authorities require. There are some state authorities that require 42 to 48. Yep. 36, he said. Go here.
What's typical construction through a extended wooded area?
So through an extended wooded area? So we're going to try to hug that blacktop driveway? If we can't hug the blacktop driveway, we're going to work with you to find an area that we can get through that wooded area. It's, I mean, there's going to be rook balls underneath there. We don't want to kill your trees. And we're going to work with you on that when we walk that property to identify where we can go and approach it. And if you have an aerial line and you prefer to go aerial across your property, where I say, as soon as we go on your private property, that is a right of entry. We're going to work with you to see what that best approach is. But that boring machine can go shoot underneath the driveway. I put it, we put it underneath too. We've got to go get it, we get an area, we can stay deep enough not to disturb that paved driveway.
Tim, I just wanted to say that we also have smaller directional drills, guys, that we can use on your property. So the same technology, the same equipment that we use, we have a smaller version of that that we can take on your property so there's little to no impact crossing creeks, going through those woods. We use that quite a bit in Hunting Valley. Our longest drop is 5,200 feet in Hunting Valley. So with very minimal damage to your property. So we're very well equipped.
I got one back here.
So during the interviewing process, there were some questions and discussion about the transition period from cable to fiber.
Yep.
So as I recall, you had a system for how you facilitate that transition for residents. And I think it'd be helpful to discuss that.
Do you have that in your?
So when you say transition, help remind me of this one.
Transitioning to streaming because we're not offering.
Oh, transition from, oh, yeah, let me.
That will help with that.
Let me jump ahead to another slide. So, let's see. So one of the things that we're providing is we're focused, first of all, I'm going to say this because I say this to every community when we come in. You know, we want to be a good neighbor when we come to a community. So if we're not being a good neighbor and we're not welcome, you know, we really don't want to be here, right? Because it has to be a mutual benefit. That's what we're targeting to do is we want to work with each and every one of you. We want to be the best neighbor we can be and make sure we're providing you what you need. So if I said something that you don't agree with, talk to me afterwards because we want to be that good neighbor and find a working solution for everything is where we're at. And if it goes beyond what we can do, we're going to be upfront and honest and admit that right upfront. So everything we're doing is to make sure we're meeting the expectations of the village. When you do cable streaming, when we come into your home and we do that survey, we want to make sure we get full home coverage. And what we're doing is we're providing a highly resilient internet service so that you can actually do services over the top, that you're not dependent upon multiple individual services. If you have a good internet connection, you can stream TV and you don't have to worry about it going out. You don't have to worry about it being out for days because we're a local company. We're going to get it repaired. When you do that, you're giving up what I call the traditional cable surfing or analog television or linear TV. What we're providing is we're in access to streaming services. And one of the things we do is we help provide apps so that you get those services. And when our guys come in, any apps or any devices that are networkable in your home, we are going to make sure that when we leave, they are connected. So we're going to work with you when our guys are in sight. That's the reason we're doing the in-home survey and the outside survey. And one of the apps we provide people is called My Bundle TV. And this is somebody we met with early on. When we first met with them, what they were doing is charging the provider to white-label this. They were only charging the provider. And what you do is you answer five simple questions. And through those five simple questions, it helps you identify what streaming service is going to provide you the content you want. Since they've been doing this, they're like an influencer. So now they have all of the traditional cable guys like Dish and all of Netflix, all the streaming guys want to partner with them as well. And they're actually receiving revenue from those guys based upon those references, those click-throughs, I'll call them. During the days, the old dial-up, but today it's called influencers. So if they influence somebody to go to that provider's site, they're getting, they get their revenue by white labeling lists to us so we can have a white labeled version of an art website. Plus, they get revenue from the content providers that they refer people to. The newest thing they're adding, since we're going to have a private label to CVG, is they will now bundle, they're working to bundle your charges. So if you want a single bill, they will bundle those different streaming services rather than having to pay them à la carte on credit cards. They will bundle those together where if you go through the My Bundle TV or call it CVG Bundle TV, you can get one common bill for all of the participating streaming providers. So, and there's other apps like this that are coming out where it helps simplify this. Voice-over IP, we've got to provide multiple recommendations for voice-over IP. So if you have an analog phone today, you can actually port in your phone number and use, put a device in, which now your phone calls will go out over the internet. There's a device you put in, you continue to use your legacy phone. You don't need a special phone for that. You port in your number, you keep your number. As long as you have a highly resilient, highly available internet service, there's no outages on that phone because the old phone system worked on 59s. Fold phone system isn't operating at 59s today anymore. It's declining because it's running on a legacy copper plant. Our internet, we're delivering 59s when we build these underground with these multiple egress points. So we provide tools to make it as easy as possible to switch away from the legacy cable to the streaming services. Plus, we have local guys who are trained, we train our guys to support you, make sure your devices are connected and help you make this change from that linear TV to streaming TV and keep it as simple as possible. So that's one of the ways we do it and we keep our eyes out there for apps. Anything we can do to simplify it for you as the user and improve that quality of experience, that helps our retention. Yeah, the televisions are all over the place. It's, any TV you can buy today is now a smart TV. It's networkable. It really doesn't matter. If you're using, there are TVs that are Netflix-ready or Roku-ready or Firestick-ready. You know, if you're already using a Firestick or Roku, you'll get a Roku TV or get a Firestick TV because you don't have to change your experience from what you've gotten used to. No, not really. It's just, it's what are you used to as the user experience? I mean, I have a Samsung at home. And the reason I have that is I have an off-air antenna to pick up my locals and it also has a live TV app. And my local channels just work into a regular channel guide and I can configure that channel guide so I can make those channels match with my old stations on the ones I commonly view. And I really like it, it's very simple. I didn't even figure it out, my wife figured it out and she came and showed me, hey, do you know you can do this? And I said, no, I didn't. All right. One more question and then we'll try to get to the slides.
When does the village plan to start this?
When does the village plan to start this?
Yeah.
Laurie, you want to answer that? Because we're finalizing the agreement right now. I think they've done two readings, so I'll let you take us there.
Second reading was last evening. So third reading and then we'll vote on it next March, in March at our regular meeting. And the agreement, the mayor will sign the agreement. You all would sign the agreement. And as soon as the agreement is signed, it starts the 30-month period running.
Yep.
Before you sign up, will you do a walkthrough on our property? Or do you have to sign up first to get the walkthrough?
You sign up for service and then we schedule the walkthrough. So that's, and if you do that, I'll have to go back through that, but I see if you do the walkthrough, you're not satisfied with what, something occurs there, you don't have to grant that right of entry because you have to sign off on that final right of entry.
Yeah, there's no term to that contract. So, you know, if we did that walkthrough and you weren't, you know, approving of what we decided that was the best way to do it and we couldn't come to agreement, you could just say, I decline your service and you would never get a bill.
Yep. There's no other questions? I'm going to jump over to the slides and we'll accelerate through the slides because I don't want to keep everybody here too long. So we'll get into the slides, get through those. And then as we're going through it, we'll take questions as we go through it, just like we've been doing so far. So, all right. I'm going to switch to this slide and I'm going to let Drew talk to this as CEO of Ohio GIG. This is kind of our organizational structure. So Drew, you want to talk about that and maybe a little bit of history?
Yeah, absolutely. So where we started was, you know, we're residents up here in the Cleveland area, had the existing providers, they were doing enough of what we needed. But we also, my father grew up on a farm outside of northwest, northeast of Cincinnati, where all our family is from. And on that farm, we still, until we brought service there a couple of years ago, had DSL service at five down, five megabits down, three up for $60 a month. We had family enterprises and businesses and manufacturing. And we were onshoring manufacturing. And, you know, a dream of my dad's was to put a manufacturing plant in the community he grew up in that has zero commercial tax base in that school district. We weren't able to do it because we didn't have the connectivity that would be required to run a modern manufacturing facility. So we were already doing communication construction and that. That's where we found Tim to tell us, what does it take to do this and is this feasible? And we said, why can't we do it, right? We already make all the parts and pieces. And, you know, we were noticing issues in our factory of productivity going way up and down on things. And what we found, it was all based upon the grants and the loans that the big providers were doing. So our concept was to take private money, private patient capital that has a longer-term view of how fast you need to make money. But also, we have a core value in our family of entrepreneurial philanthropy is it's not always about how much money you're donating or whatever, but can you do good with the things you're doing? So as we look at this, Fiber Capital Partners is what we started to raise money. And we started in Little Miami GIG on the far left in the yellow. That is outside of Cincinnati, Ohio. And then we started adding other gigs like Belmont County GIG, Logan County GIG. Belmont County is right across from Wheeling, West Virginia. Logan County is northwest of Columbus. And then we now have Shugren Valley GIG, 614 GIG and Marion Union County GIG. So with that, we also have vertical integration where we've built, we finally built that manufacturing facility in Morrow, Ohio. And we extrude and make our own conduit, which is what we put in the ground to put the fiber in the ground, right? So we have all these companies working together under the Ohio GIG group because we feel it's really important to hire local leaders that have the ability to make decisions to do what's right in their community and in their business, but share the risk and the back office support that a larger organization can support them with. So that's why you see multiple companies under a larger company. Anything else there, Tim?
No, I think.
That was the short and sweet version.
I think, okay, now I got to turn it around. I think you hit it on all and I think it just shows the, it shows the family's commitment to the area. I mean, when I first met Det and I went out and I was working for Comnet over in Northwest Ohio as their CEO, and I did a consultant with Det to go out and look at some of his manufacturing companies and tell him where those components were used at in the telecommunications network. Because he's building a lot of products, wanted to understand the application side. And during that, he asked me what I did. And I told him I was building fiber systems, was actually at the time building a 640-mile system. And he said, well, can you get fiber to my family farm? I said, well, I don't really do that. I partner with local guys to do it. But if you build up to me, I can get you connected. And I looked at it and I said, it'll cost you about a half a million dollars to build from your farm up to where my fiber route's at. But if you build up there, I'll get you connected. I didn't hear anything for probably three to six months. I got a call from him, he said, hey, what if we start a business together? And that was in 2016. In 2019, he hit me on a night, I must have been a little getting tired because I told him, I said, well, I'm not getting any younger, so if we're going to do this, we got to go. So I joined him and committed to him in 2019. By July of 2019, I had left my former job or transitioned out of it. We started the business up. And by May of the following year, we had our first customers active in Morrow, Ohio. And that was in the middle of the start of a pandemic. So can we get it done? Yeah, we can get it done. We know how and we know how to serve small areas and it comes with, takes a lot of integrity and a lot of commitment to do it. But the family's bought into it, the family's behind it. And you can tell that by the way they're vertically integrating. Because I told them during the pandemic, I said, I'm worried about material shortages. Said, we start hiring people, I got to be able to keep building. In order to keep building, I have to have two things. I need duct and I need handholds. I can put the fiber in later, but once I hire these people, I got to have them productive. And so how do we address that? Well, we got to build a conduit plant then because there's a shortage. And that's what we did. So they're very committed and very behind it from a total system perspective.
And one thing I think I skipped over was, you know, we have, coming from a rural upbringing and living in these suburban or exurb communities that are on the fringe of these cities, this is a lifestyle choice that a lot of people make, right? And they don't live rurally or out of the cities because they are not smart and they don't live in the city and make enough money to live in the city. They do it for a choice or a way of life. And. And just because there aren't 80 homes per mile, you know, we didn't understand why that meant that anybody that lived in lower density areas or underserved areas were, didn't have the same right to essentially a lifeline service now. Right? You know, the story is my cousin lived on the family farm and she drove a half hour every day to her brother's house to do a work from home fella work job because she couldn't do it at home. Right? So, you know, we really put pencil paper and, and got dirty and learned how to do this business and how to do it in a more efficient new way that allowed us to look at communities that don't have the same density as Cuyahoga County or, you know, downtown urban areas where all the focus from traditional providers had been.
You know, one of the things we, one of the things we heard early on is a lot of the big guys are looking for a density of 65 or greater. We're, we're dealing with a density less than 30. Typically we're 26 and below. And to do that, we had to vertically integrate and control the construction because we can't have what I call margin stacking where you have a general contractor and a bunch of subcontractors under there. So we gotta, we gotta control our costs and that's what we did. We self-perform all of our construction. When we went into the model, we were looking to do 50/50. We found that by, by doing a hundred percent, we can get that price point to where we can make the business case work in these communities. So when you see people working, it's not somebody from another company or a contractor, it's our people. And we always tell our people, we have to, we have to be a good neighbor because if we damage our neighbor's property, are they gonna ask us back in? If we, if we mess up their home and we go into their home and create a mess, are they gonna ask us back into their home? No. You know, we gotta, we gotta serve the people we see at church and we go to school with is the way we always look at it in smaller communities. So you gotta treat them right. And, and that's what we do because you're not here today going tomorrow. We're here, we're here for the long haul on it. Just real quick, this is just a quick slide that shows the overall Chagrin Valley Gig area and the two, two starting anchors and the facilities we've used to accelerate this by leasing them and building in Hunting Valley and Gates Mills. But you'll see that the family has a manufacturing facility up in Mentor, Ohio. We are leveraging that facility because it's pre-existing. And then we had that MDU opportunity down in Aurora, Ohio. So we're gonna continue to expand this area. Our goal is, is to find three good community anchors to get us to the point where we can get the 3,500 subscribers. And we think we have those three communities. It's Hunting Valley, Gates Mills and Kirtland. We're advancing Gate, Hunting, Hunting Valley and Gate, then Gates Mills because they're directly adjacent to each other. Kirtland's a little bit further off, but we've already secured the fiber facilities that go through Kirtland so we can add it to the network very quickly and give us another diverse point. So the plan's there and how we lay out and how we build out Chagrin Valley and it's, it's very structured and you, we're happy to have Gates Mills as one of the early adopters. The egress points, I said, that's important for survivability. We're gonna have one out of Hunting Valley. We're gonna have one out of that Mentor, Ohio plant and we're gonna have one out of our Kirtland pop, which goes out to a provider called Windstream. And they provide, are gonna provide us a transport service back down to Columbus to get out to the internet. That's very critical because that's that tertiary. So I can lose two of those and still be providing you access to the internet, which means your streaming services, whether it be TV or voice, they're all still working. So highly resilient network, both from the physical fiber being underground, plus with the way we connect out to the world. We already showed this slide. This is that initial build and this is showing what the, what the village has committed to and then how we're gonna branch out and serve all the communities. So we'll come off of that route into those, into those areas. The further you're off from this, this core ring, yes, the longer it will take for us to get to you. But the initial focus will be to put the ring in place and then start branching out of it. And the way we do that is people register their addresses with us. We'll build a heat map. It's important for us to get the early revenue. So after we get the village connected, we're gonna go out and we're gonna, we're gonna look at, see where are the most residents registering with us from? And we're gonna try to get to those areas as early as possible because that early revenue's very critical for what I call an edge out, edge out service area. Register for service now. Registration is now open to request service to your home. There's a form on the website. You go to that form and it's just very simple information. We're really looking at, what's your name? What's contact? What's your street address? And so we register that as having interest and that's how we build our heat map and where we're going. So we encourage you to go there today, register and also to tell your neighbors to register because the more people in that concentrated area that register, the quicker we're coming to that area. We're coming to every area, but we gotta prioritize it, right? Go to Chagrin Valley Gig and click on service request to fill out the form. That's as simple as that. From signing to activation, what happens? The first thing is, is, is we go out and we do a road right away construction completed notification. So we're gonna tell you that, hey, we've completed our route past your road, your, your home is now serviceable. So you're gonna get, you're gonna get that notification that, hey, the road's completed, you're now serviceable, we're gonna start activations. We're gonna schedule a property walkout and in-home assessment. That's where we talked about. Take pictures, show us where all, show us where your dog fence is, show us where your sprinkler system is. It slows us down when we have to stop and repair stuff. We want our guys to be able to get on a property clean and get off. That's when we're the most productive and we're as most, as efficient as we can be. The physical fiber installation on the property occurs next, then the yard registration, restoration, then we schedule your in-home installation. During that in-home survey, we're gonna do an assessment to see if you need any of those mesh, mesh units because your home's bigger than 2,400 square feet. Also, if you have an outbuilding, that's when we're gonna identify that, that, hey, there's, we wanna extend that D mark, do an extended D mark to serve the outbuilding or to get services in another area. We're gonna identify all those during that in-home survey. So when we schedule that installation, we come in on one trip and get it all done. So the in-home installation and activation. Well, our, our goal is, is to activate it before our guys leave the home. Sometimes that does not always happen. There's something that still has to happen in that outside plant. Maybe the fiber wasn't fully spliced in area, so the activation will be slightly delayed. But our goal is, is to have, when we do that in-home installation, our ideal situation is to activate. That way we can verify everything is operating as expected. And then we set you up for auto payment and billing setup. We use a port billing portal. You log into your portal. We do not take your credit card by our, through our people. We don't store it in our systems. It's in a secure, secure third-party operator that that's what they focus on. It's called authorize.net. They're the ones that store and process that credit card. They do it for merchants across the country. They're the one, they're one of the original credit card processors. So you log into your portal, that is hosted in their system. We just provide you the access to it with your activation for payment. So we try to do everything electronic to keep it as simple as possible through that portal. Biggest question are some of our customer service people is, hey, I forgot my password. Can you help me reset it? We can definitely help with that. We'll get your password reset and get you back into it. That's to our benefit. So that's, that is the process from, from the time we say that that road is now serviceable for the time you're active and in service and paying. And that's the start of that seven-year rate lock guarantee. The in-home assessment, you know, new home construction, you know, we provide coverage analysis for the proper placement of the wired outlets and access ports. If it's a construction home, the assessment is the elect, of the existing electrical infrastructure to ensure complete coverage, device setup, management, communication, computers, phones, tablets, smart TVs, et cetera. You know, we're gonna make sure those networkable devices are connected, your internet connection. And today, now that could be a, that could be your thermostat, it could be a smart light, it could be an electrical outlet, it could, I don't know if we have sump pumps up here, it could be a monitor on your sump pump to make sure your basement doesn't flood when you're away. It can be a security camera. It's all across the board. Internet connection, access TV, video streaming, web content, social media. Make sure you have your content that you need and your remote mode access. Our service allow you to internet, interact with your home devices while you're away. Those, those are all the things. That's where I say you, you, you can access your, your device when you're not there through the, based upon the security systems that you put in place with these devices. You're buying, you know, Best Buy or wherever you're picking them up at, Amazon probably, right? So anything, anybody wants to add to that, Drew?
Nope.
Okay.
The point is, is we'll help you with that.
Yeah, we're, we're, yeah, we're not just going to turn it on and say it's all up to you.
The only thing we can't do is enter your credit card for you into Netflix, right? But if you need help signing up or whatever, we're there to help.
The rates, we've already went through this. Just a couple of things. We talked about that managed wifi, you know, a full disclosure, being transparent. This is where I talk about that managed mess solution. It's available based on estimate of placement, number of units during the site survey. It's $75 per, per unit one time, time, not time, with a $5 monthly per mess unit charge because that's a managed mess unit. Everything we do, we management, our goal is, is to eliminate the number of truck rolls. We like to manage that way we can see what's going on. So if you are experiencing a problem, we got, we got triggers back into our system to say, get out there and work with this customer. Cause sometimes the customer doesn't realize that they have an impaired service. When we call them, they say, we noticed something. That's the first time they become aware of it. None of their speeds might be slower, there might be some interruptions, they just haven't detected it because the service is so much faster than what they had in the past. Talk about the 2,400 square feet and then each mess unit adds about 1,500 square feet is what they cover. So that's how we determine how many you need. No fee fight site survey. There's a company up here, I know that does that as a business. It's about a $300 value based on what we see in the market. So we're providing that. It's the cost of a truck roll and the in-home assessment and post-assessment of, of the There's your mess, talk about the mess units for wifi six, wifi seven. Right now wifi six products are generally available for the consumer market. Wifi seven are being, are coming out, but they're limited availability, they're much more expensive. So we're deploying wifi six, wifi sevens, the future. And also just one thing we didn't mention is the system we're putting is next generation. There's what's called GPON. Well, we're putting it in the system and what we commit to at Gates Mills and GPON's capable of one gigabit, which everybody's talking, I wanna get gigabit service. This, and we're putting in is capable of 10 gigabit. So we're preparing for the future through a simple change out. That unit is supposed to go to 25 gig and then to 50 gigabit. So what we're putting in is gonna have a long life. You don't have to have what's called a platform change out, which a lot of the systems, legacy systems, they have to change the platform out to be able to offer these type of speeds, especially when it's the same speed up as the same speed down. And the more video conferencing you do, the more AI computing you need, you do, the need to have that speed synchronous, the same coming into your home as going out, that's, that's necessary. The legacy DSL and cable modem services typically, if you get 300 in, you're getting 30 out. That's becoming a constraint. This system, you got a gig in, you get a gig out. You want 10 gig in in the future, 10 gig out. It's capable, fully capable of that and that service will be rolled out probably in year two. I wanna get the core protected before I start offering somebody a 10 gig service. Or we wanna get the core protected. We talked about this slide. Just one thing I didn't mention, they have, they've, they have over 1.25 million recommendations they've made to providers across the country. This is a very popular app to help simplify that switch from linear TV to streaming TV. Very effective and you can go to there today at the mybundleTV.com, answer the questions, tell what you normally do and it'll give you a recommendation on what streaming services you should have. They have to make money, but there is money on, in that form. So I, you know, I disclose that for them. The benefit of pre-register, you know, secure your place for installation savings during major construction. Current cutoff for service orders will be 30 months from the date of service execution with the village. Our goal is to be done with major construction within 33 to 36 months. Depend upon how many people wait to the end to sign up will depend whether it's 33 or 36 months. There's always people that put it off to the very end. We don't want that. We'd like to see it front loaded so that we can plan those hookups. That's the reason that if you sign up before month 15, you don't have, you're guaranteed that no drop install. It's only at month 15, we're gonna major, take a look at that 4 and 50 feet and, but even then, I've already looked at all the drops in Gates Mills. It's very unlikely there's gonna be any type of one-time fee for drops over 4 and 50 feet as long as we have significant adoption. What installation savings are provided? You know, lock in your, your, your community sponsored discount for the life of the service. And that life last service right now is defined as seven years for that rate lock guarantee. No charge outdoor service drop as long as community average is 4 and 50 feet or, or less. The average exceeds 450, install fees may apply and we'll assess average at month 15. No charge in-home survey, that's roughly a $300 value and no charge for indoor service drops in in-home wifi gateway router. Wifi router is the plan for one gigabit, wifi seven for two gigabit and above. 50% discounts off 150, 150 list on the wifi six. You can go ahead and check multiple different spots. The good wifi six go for 300, 150 to $300. And I looked at them, we use the 150 number. Wifi seven unit discount off market price, once it's, the consumer product is generally available. You can get them, but they're not generally available yet. They're still waiting on the chipset. They're waiting on that Intel plant to go active in Columbus, I guess, so. You know, is there an opportunity? A lot of people say, hey, can we invest in your company? That is Fiber Capital Partners. They have fund development too, which is open being filled. And you can talk to Max, Max can talk to you about that as, as, as the representative here from Fiber Capital Partners. Or there's a direct local investment. That is fully funded here in Chagrin Valley Gig. We had a party that was vested interest and they filled the locals, the local vested interests. So somebody's already put up, put up those dollars. And those are multi, that's a multimillion dollar investment. And they're, the reason we want somebody is we always say, we have to match the capital with the asset. I already said, this is a seven to 10 year asset. We can't have venture capitalists who are looking to flip in five years. We need somebody who's gonna be patient with us, which is what the hunters are and what's the people, the other people we bring to the table. The contact info, Chagrin Valley Gig, Don Fellows is your construction manager. Met Don. Drew Hunter is the CEO of Ohio Gig. And Nick Hunter, who wasn't with us because he's meeting with a potential investor. He's not here, but Nick is your Fiber Capital Partners. Max works for Nick. So there are investment opportunities. We feel, we feel we do small to medium Ohio better than anybody. And if I can do small to medium Ohio better than anybody, you're dang right, I'm out to prove I can do metro better than the other guys. So that's, that's the reason, you know, that's what we're focused on. We, we feel that we are the provider of choice. We appreciate that Gates Mills agreed with us and we're looking forward to bringing service to your community and meeting each of, each of you, seeing your homes and seeing what we can do for each and every one of you. So thank you for coming tonight. We kinda got hung up on questions early on. I didn't mean to be impatient. I was trying to get to this and address things because I think this would address a lot of the questions, but always taking the order it comes. Open it back up. Does anybody, buddy have any questions for us? Yes, sir.
Yep. Access most of the streets, right?
Yep.
If you get to a residence.
Yep.
Right? If you have a situation where, you know, wooded, you know, a lot of feedback to the resident or whatever.
Yeah.
Do you do anything where you put a cable that might serve multiple homes?
Yes.
Back through that.
Yeah. So, so we, we, we call, we, we call that a, what did I call it? I don't know. Now, when I go, when I go back, it's a shared, shared drive.
Yeah.
So if I have a shared drive, we're typically it's on one party's property. So if it's sitting on that person's property, that person, I meet with all the residents, that person agrees, yeah, I'm gonna do for the best interest of my neighbors. So you build down here, you can put, place it on my property, you can place handholds and branch off and serve the other people along the way. Cause it's really, it's a community effort. Never had an incident where somebody says, I wanna charge you to come down my driveway to be able to reach my neighbor Joe. No, it's, it's always been done to good faith. We have a lot of those down in Little Miami Gig area.
Yeah.
Where they have what I call double lots, lot, house. Where they have what I call double lots, lot, house in the front and a house in the back. Generally, the guy in the back owns the driveway, but a lot of times it was, a lot of times the older ones, the guy in the front owned the whole property and he sold that lot back. So he kept the driveway. Never did I have anybody say, I'm gonna block this guy and, and require a charge. But we, we will work with that and make sure that's documented in that right of entry. That was, that was an easy one, once I remember what I called it.
Ohio Gig and Chagrin Valley Gig is our solution. Thank you, Tim. And we started this two and a half years ago. The biggest players do not wanna be in the village, so Sherry picked those that are close by and that would leave over half the village without access to any kind of a fiber. We also wanted primarily a burial solution as opposed to an aerial solution. Again, the two largest refuse to even quote on that basis. This is our solution. And so we've worked pretty hard and diligently through the last six months to find the best solution with a affordable answer. And the things that we have talked about today, the community discount by providing in-kind services, the village agreeing to a 25-year contract and preparing for those services, the ability to use the connections that we have through the village engineer to provide access across bridges, connections to the water department, connections that have value to a contractor that, that those other contractors would not give us any consideration for. Those things drove the price down. They drove the price down probably 25 to 30% from the list prices. We've signed up, we will sign up council approval. If, if they go that way in the next month. And again, we are somebody who are real estate development. The village has 11 buildings that need to be all connected. We would be the anchor tenant, just as you would find an anchor tenant in a real estate development. That anchor tenant gives them the confidence to get started, gives them a goal to get to. And as Tim said on his map there, that will be the connection point through Cedar Road and through River Road. So the next steps are as follows. We have the third reading of council, which will be in three weeks, four weeks now from yesterday. We will have postcards and other mailings out to villagers to remind them of this. The YouTube site is available and it's been pre-recorded. We will also make available probably this space here from time to time for Chagrin Valley Gig to be here and physically explain this again to people or to sign them up or to otherwise talk about their services. If you have any questions on the construction, we can run those through, through Chris in terms of your individual yards or, or damage. I gotta tell you, we've been watching what, what's been going on in Hunting Valley the last nine months. The, the, the work that's done is clean. There's not equipment and stuff laying around. Yes, you'll see blue pipe popping out of the ground here and there. It's usually gone a week later. They've got all their equipment sequestered over into a place on the other side of the river by, I think by South Woodland maybe, or by, is that what's that done?
174 Woodland, yeah.
Yeah. So, you know, we're particularly, we don't want the village torn up for three years, okay? Do it, do an area, get it done and move on. And so that's, that's where we're at. Any questions, send them to myself or to Lori. We'll do our best to answer them. If there are technical questions or service or streaming type questions, we'll pass them on to our friends on the, on the left-hand side here. But I do thank you for joining us today and hope that this is something that you're all interested in. Thank you.